Roz is at a, she's, she just sent a text saying that she's rocking. She's still in session, but the mayor will call her in. Go closer.
Yeah. It's a good day, I think. Uh, it's a good day, I think.
Is it really? Okay. What, wait, wait. The how of that never happens.
I've never been here on time, so I'm usually like sprinting in to get to the item that I needed to be here for.
We're good, Mayor.
Are we ready? I'd like to call to order the city council meeting September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, five oh one Main Street, five thirty P M. May we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call?
Renshaw.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Garcia.
Hackley.
Here.
Dave.
Here.
Andrews.
Here.
Selman.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Greenwald.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Item number seven, mayor, I mean, number four, mayor's correspondence. February, September twentieth, two thousand twenty-four is Military Night at the Keokuk Chiefs Football Game, and it starts at seven P M. And it's also movie night at the Keokuk Library outside in the park, and that starts at seven P M, too. Saturday, September twenty-first, Keokuk Farmers Market at the River City Mall, eight till eleven thirty A M. Item number two would be cough in conversation with Rosalynn Garcia, candidate for county auditor, and Teresa Murray, candidate for Lee County Board of Supervisors at the Ivan Fowler Center in Montrose, Iowa, from eight to ten A M. Item number three, Clark County Mule Festival, starting at ten A M at the Clark County Fairgrounds. Item number four, thirteenth annual Hunger Games at the Hy-Vee Parking Lot at ten A M to five P M. Games, face painting, carnival foods, and more. Free will donation or non-perishable items are donations. And number five would be shop with a cop fundraiser at the Hidden Towers out on Main Street, and it is Music Bingo Night. Sunday, September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, Living Waters Assembly of God Church, nineteen twenty-eight. May we have a dedication and ribbon cutting of their newly remodeled building, and it starts at twelve thirty P M. Item number two, halfway to St. Patty's Day, eleven A M at Donegan Shamrock on the River. Music will be by Blame Not the Bard. Item number three, Bullis Rudder Big Band will perform at five o'clock P M at the Rand Park Pavilion. Then, moving on to the next week, Thursday, September twenty-sixth, Friday, September twenty-seventh, and Saturday, September twenty-eighth, will be the Keokuk Dam Festival, carnival rides, food, games, music at Victory Park on the riverfront. And also, starting Thursday, September twenty-sixth, Friday, September twenty-seventh, Saturday, September twenty-eighth, and Sunday, September twenty-ninth, will be Keokuk's twentieth annual Geo Fest, and it begins with check-in times on Thursday, September twenty-seventh, at seven P M, and on Friday, September twenty-eighth, and Saturday, September twenty-eighth, uh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, at six fifteen and eleven A M, and Sunday, September twenty-ninth, at six fifteen A M. And again, eat, drink, and shop local, and remember kindness matters. Item number five, citizens' request. If you are here to come for citizens' requests, please come to the podium, state your name and your address. You have three minutes, and if anybody's here, please come forward.
Hi, my name's Adam Johnson, eleven fifteen Blondo Street here in Keokuk. Among all the other things that I do, I work for CCS, and I wanted to briefly discuss some developments specifically with the mall property. CCS submitted a proposal yesterday for purchase, and that was tentatively accepted today. So CCS will be purchasing the block that is the mall, as well as the restaurant across the street. And that is great and terrifying. It's a lot, and I'm the one that gets sent out to talk about things, so, so here I am. I want to bring this to the council's attention because we're going to need your help. We're going to need the city's help to do anything with that building with the attempts to stabilize and revitalize the mall. We're going to need help. We don't really even know what to ask for. We don't know what any of that stuff looks like. Our plan right now is to immediately stabilize the building by repairing the roof, going through and making necessary repairs to HVAC and things like that, dehumidifying the building, trying to get any mold remediated out of that. There's a lot of just stabilization that needs to happen. We are well suited for that. CCS is in a unique position to acquire the mall and to do anything with it because we don't need to make profit on the work being done. We just need to stabilize the building. So we're in a really, really great position for that. The mall's been in disrepair as long as I've been alive, as long as I've been a citizen of this town since October twenty-first, nineteen ninety. It's been going downhill in every capacity. So I'm excited to see it's stabilized. I'm excited to see something happening with it that is moving it in a positive direction. The mall has been a huge topic of conversation, not necessarily involving the council, but the Chamber of Commerce with the farmers market and all of that stuff being moved away from there because of the hazard that the mall is right now with the parking lot and everything else. It's in really, really rough shape. So Kevin submitted a proposal. It has been tentatively accepted, but the current owner is in the hospital wherever he lives. So it's kind of going to be a slow process, and maybe all of this goes to crap before I, before we continue this conversation. I don't know. But we wanted to at least come forward to the council and say, hey, this is the plan. This is what we're trying to do. We want to purchase the mall, stabilize the building, and ultimately move our operations headquarters, as well as everything else that we do, to the mall on the Heilig Myers End. So the end that has been closed since nineteen ninety-something. We want to move in there. We toured the mall. We looked at the roof deck. We looked at the roofing. I've flown a drone over the facility. We're pretty familiar with the existing conditions. The basement is in great shape. The upstairs is in terrible shape, but we have plans and kind of a vision for it. Outside of the, that end, the east end of the mall, the Fourth Street end, our plans are to attempt to invite retailers, invite commercial industry, invite anything, anyone that will occupy the other spaces, which starts with stabilizing everything, which will be done within the first, hopefully within the first six months of owning the facility, but starting to invite people back in. So we're looking for tenants. We're going to be looking for anything that can go in there and generate some sort of revenue. We don't know what that looks like. It's not going to be Hallmark and J.C. Penney's and Diamond Dave's. That stuff is not coming back. But CCS has been using Wells Carey up on Ninth and Tymia for a long time as an athletic facility. We've partnered with a lot of different baseball and softball teams that use that facility for indoor practice, weight training, team development. They've been doing that for the last couple of years since we purchased that building. The first thing we did with that was stabilize the building that was falling down in our, in our community. We're going to try to do that again, but this is a much bigger initial investment. We're talking about, his asking price was six hundred thousand, and he wanted another hundred thousand dollars to buy the property across the street, which was the only way that he wanted to do the deal, was to sell both at the same time. So we're in right now at seven hundred thousand dollars-ish, and all that'll be on Beacon in a few minutes, or, you know, a few days, so it's kind of public. But that is, that is where we're at. We want to move into that Fourth Street anchor location, use Heilig Myers to continue what we are doing, vacate our property on Ninth Street, vacate our property on South Tenth, vacate. We've, we've used some storage at Wells Carey, vacate all of that stuff, move towards the mall as our primary operating facility. Having out of sight, out of mind places puts our community at risk. We found that out a few weeks ago when we had a large piece of equipment attached to another large piece of equipment stolen from our facility, driven through town incredibly recklessly, and damaged a lot of personal property, private property. CCS is currently at a loss of lots and lots of money, six figures, and, and just lost that we won't be able to recuperate all of. So we are struggling on that side, and it's really hard for us to secure everything that we have in any sort of practical way. So we've been looking. The mall kind of fits that bill, but it's not zoned correctly. It's currently zoned as commercial property. There's light industrial property right next door. I think rezoning is not going to be an issue. We've sort of already started the conversation with Pam. We started the conversation with Rosalynn and Pam, and, and there's a meeting planned, and I think all of that will go okay. But we really don't know what else to ask for. We don't know who to be inviting. We've got plans for lots of the spaces. Kevin loves pickleball, so there would be an indoor pickleball room. Like I said, we have those teams that utilize our space up at Wells Carey. Our goal would really be to sell Wells Carey if there's an opportunity to do that. So he's going to put some facilities for them to practice in, in the mall. We've got indoor batting cages at our facility on Ninth Street and at our facility, and at the Wells Carey facility. If you guys haven't been to any of that stuff, it's really dumb, but fun if you like baseball, if you like any of that stuff. We're also, we have to figure out palm tree storage, and so if you have, that's a whole nother thing. But we're trying to move if we can because we have too much stuff. We can't get enough cameras to keep track of all of our stuff. We can't secure our keys well enough. We're, we're struggling on that side. We do, we're one of the largest employers in town. We do a lot of stuff here and outside of here, and we have a lot of equipment and a lot of risk. But we're also at a place where this is huge. It's a huge initial investment. It's going to be a huge ongoing investment. If we can't get people to fill those retail spots, it's probably going to be a problem. We can occupy a big portion of it, and, and it doesn't matter because we already have operating costs. But we also don't want this to be something that we say, oh, we're going to do this, and then two years later, you guys are looking for someone else to buy the mall. We don't want that. I'm excited as a citizen because Kevin is the only one that I know that has the money to and the ability to do this locally. I'm excited that it's going to be local again. I'm excited that it's going to be somebody that doesn't have to churn a profit right away to make it work. I'm really excited about all of that. It's also terrifying as a citizen and as a member of that organization. So we want to invite retailers, other commercial tenants, back into the space once it's repaired and cleaned up and treated for mold. We want to include the storefronts. We're, we're looking at restaurants. We've already talked to some people about either opening something inside the mall or, or building in the mall parking lot, which would be really cool. And maybe even a theater again. I don't know. We'll just start like buying lazy boys and saying, okay, this is what we're going to do for now. I don't know what that looks like, but that's what's going on. That's what we have. So we wanted to come to you guys because we need help with zoning, and that's going to be a thing. But also with tax abatements or grants or whatever might be available for revitalizing and stabilizing that property because we don't know. And so if you know, or someone listening online knows, I need help. We need help because it's going to be, it's going to be huge. But if we can save the mall and it not just be another building that we tear down in thirty years, it'd be really cool. So I have. Anybody have any questions, comments for me?
Yeah, awesome. I'm glad to hear it. I'm super excited, especially what you guys did with Wells Carey. You know, we're your neighbor.
Oh, yeah.
Talbot House, and watching people come in and all that, that we're doing things that they shouldn't have. You guys cleaned it up, and the property looks really good. So I'm excited to see what you guys do down here.
Me, too. Thank you. Any else?
Thank you very, very much. Anybody else? All right, then, we'll move right along. Item number six, the consent agenda. Minutes of the regular city council meeting and council workshop of September fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Cash receipts and treasurer's report for August twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. Resolution approving a liquor license for Main Street, Keokuk Incorporated, five eighteen Main Street. Fundraiser being held October third, tenth, seventeenth, and twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, at five twenty-eight Main Street, four thirty to nine P M, pending ram. Resignation of Maureen Hutchcroft from the Rand Park Pavilion Commission, effective November first, two thousand twenty-four. Special event permit for Erica Barrett on behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission, the Keokuk Historic Society, and the Oakland Cemetery Initiative for Oakland Cemetery Walking Tour, Saturday, October fifth, two thousand twenty-four, eleven to five P M, pending insurance. So I need a motion to pay the bills and transfers listed at the Register's Office, five four two eight through five four three zero. Do I have a motion to approve? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Consider a resolution authorizing the demo of structures at seventeen nineteen South Fifth Street and twenty-one South Fifth Street. Do I have a motion to approve? A structural engineer was hired to inspect the buildings to determine if stabilization efforts versus demolition was an option. At that time, the buildings were declared dangerous with a statement that collapse of seventeen nineteen South Fifth was imminent. The previous owner was sent a violation notification at which time he quitclaim-dated the properties to the current owner, who has no means to demolish the structures. An attorney has been consulted, and the city has no recourse other than to place a special assessment against the property for all work and services completed. Five bids were received ranging from a hundred and fifty-eight thousand to eight hundred and sixty thousand. These bids do not include tipping fees. The low bidder requested removal, removal of his bid due to the concerns that the city's aggressive timeline to complete the demolition and the asbestos abatement contractor would not be available. CCS was the second low bid at a hundred and eighty thousand. The property owner will be billed for the demolition. If not paid within thirty days, items will, liens will be placed on the properties. Any more discussion?
I have a couple of questions. Is it, will it be the current property owner being billed or the property owner who held it for a long time? Okay. And what goes into, what consists of the special assessment? What is that?
So that's just your lien against the property. Yeah, it's, it's considered a special assessment. So that will be the demolition, our time. What else will it be? There'll be anything that's involved with sewer, water, capping, tipping fees. Any of that will be billed against that property, and then it'll be, a lien will be placed on it.
Okay, and the property owner who held it for a long time? I know there was those violations against him. Are any of those still being pursued, or we're just done with that?
You know, we did have court against him, but after he quitclaimed-dated it, there was really not a lot that we were going to be able to do with him at that point, which is a very sad situation that he can't not be held responsible for doing what he actually did.
Do you remember what the court findings were, were found against him when we were?
I honestly don't. I would have to go back and, and take a look at that.
I was just wondering if we got anything.
Yeah, I, no, I know we didn't. And I don't know if it was a continuance, and then they just ended up dropping it because there was really not a lot that they were going to get done with it. But I will, I think by the time the, we sent the letter and the court, he had already quitclaim-dated it prior to that, which we didn't know. So I don't think that we were even able to get him into court because of that.
Okay, so I, I just want to make sure we try to like avoid this situation again. If our vacant property ordinance will try to help this, or if this situation will come up in the future where we're just stuck.
Exactly. I mean, we have several of them that, you know, are not in real great shape. They are being taken to court for the vacant property registry. Also, the condition of the building. Honestly, the way our system is with the state of Iowa, the city can actually place, or take them to court, and you can fine them, and then the judgment will go toward that property. And, but the only thing the court is going to do is give the city the ability to demolish it. They're not going to require, I mean, you know, they say it's going to be abated, but if it's not abated within this time, then the city can't abate it. So it really always falls back to the city in those situations. I told Dave, you know, that's something that, somewhere in the, in the system, that needs to be changed to where we can hold somebody responsible, especially if they do have the funding.
Now, one of the other things that we discussed along with working with our politicians and legislators is to try to make them recognize the burden it puts on communities, is to get our action taken care of in a, in a quicker manner to hopefully lock that current property owner in before they can transition the property like they did in that case on South Fifth.
And I believe after you've asked that, I believe that the current property owner was taken to court. So there is something that you file regardless of whether he has funding. So if he ever won the lottery or something, or his back taxes, I mean, if we ever, if he had a tax rebate, then those could come to the city. So, I mean, it's a slim chance, but at least it's there in case it ever did happen.
Which departments is this coming out of the, the budget?
So it would be the demolition fund in housing.
Okay.
Which is a hundred and forty-one thousand, I believe, is left in that. And then there's going to have to be a budget amendment of the sixty-some thousand that's left, which.
And that basically wipes out our budget then?
Wipes out our demo.
Tear anything else down then?
Correct.
Remaining? Okay.
Correct. Through July of, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Is it such a priority that this needs to be taken care of ahead of all the other demolitions?
This one's a safety, a safety issue, so it is important.
Can I come up? Is this discussion?
So we toured the property with Casey. We went through several times. We went through with asbestos consultants and all sorts of other things. We've talked to the D N R, again, in my role as a CCS employee. And, and honestly, that price is, I would, I hate to stand here and say a hundred and eighty thousand is a good deal because that sucks as a citizen of the community, but I told, my bid was two hundred and twenty thousand, and Kevin said, take that back. And I want you guys to know that as, as part of what we're talking about because I sincerely appreciate that we do budget for that every year, that we are taking down some of these properties that are just blights on our community, dangers and hubs of ill will against everybody else. It seems like it, it's just a mess. But Casey, this isn't listed up there, and maybe this is not something we should say, but Casey fell through, or started to fall through a portion of the floor because we were, it's, it's just totally unstable. The bricks are falling away. It's really, really bad. So in the consideration of the demolition, we're talking about building a scaffold wall to protect the property that is right next door. We've got to work hand in hand with Alliant. It's going to be a really, really tricky job, but if not, we're going to have a green tambourine situation, and it will fall down in a non-controlled way, and there's nothing we're going to be able to do about it, especially if we get even any amount of snow or rain or any, any sort of weight on it at all, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight, consider resolution removing a security light and replacing it with a streetlight on Cherokee Lane. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Cherokee Lane has a streetlight at the corner, a security light halfway down the lane, as well as one on James West's property at number eight Cherokee Lane. Mr. West pays for both security lights. He is requesting, since the security lights were there when he bought the property, that he is, would he not have to pay for the one halfway down the road? Alliant Energy will replace the security light with a streetlight so he does not have to pay. It will go on the city's bill. Alliant Energy requires a resolution to change the light. The added cost to the city is three dollars and fifty-nine cents for the pole usage and nine twenty-one for the bulb, a total of twelve dollars and eighty cents per month. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine, consider resolution approving a contract with Commercial Contracting Services to repair the sewer at ten oh seven Franklin Street. Do I have a motion to approve?
So I'll move.
On May seventh, on May seventh, two thousand twenty-four, a letter was sent to the homeowner of ten oh seven Franklin Street indicating that after televising and inspecting the city's sewer main, it was determined that their private water service was installed through the sewer main. The damage, the damaged, the sewer main, this damaged the sewer main, allowing erosion to take place, causing a sinkhole. The letter stated that this is the homeowner's responsibility to repair. A second letter requesting repairs was sent on July ninth, two thousand twenty-four. The owner did not respond to either letter and was given adequate time to get the sewer repairs made. The city requested quotes to make the needed repairs, and one quote was received from Commercial Contracting Services, CCS, in the amount of five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Once the sewer is repaired, the cost will be billed to the homeowner, and if not paid in the requested time, the costs will be assessed to their property taxes. I would therefore request that the city council approve a contract with CCS to repair sewer, the sewer at ten twenty, ten oh seven Franklin at the cost of five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Any discussion?
Yes. On that repair, the water line's going to be involved with that. Is that going to take care, if the water line would get hit, does that price cover that, too? I mean, they're digging it on a sewer that a water line is through, and you're going to repair this.
If, if the, if the contractor were to damage the water main, they would be responsible for repairing it.
The contractor would?
Yeah.
It wouldn't be an extra added? It would be in that price?
I would assume, yeah, they, they would be responsible for, if they damaged the water line, then they would be responsible for fixing it.
Okay.
So where this is, the, the private water line from?
I know. I know.
So hopefully, we don't have anything.
Steve's well aware of this one.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number ten, consider resolution approving and authorizing execution of owner's consent to plat certificate related to proposed carbide first edition subdivision plat. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
We have finally received all documentation to record the carbide first edition subdivision plat. Part of the documentation. plat. Part of the documenta- documentation is an owner's consent to plat. Jenna Scoresby and Aylerz and Cooney have also attached a resolution for the city council to authorize the execution of the owner's consent to the plat on behalf of the city. The resolution is not strictly necessary, but helps document the authorization to sign the owner's consent to plat if prior authority to sign the documentation has not previously been given. Do I have any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number eleven, consider resolution approving and authorizing execution of owner's, oh, already did that one, didn't we? Consider resolution suspending the civil service hiring practices for a period of one year as allowed by Iowa code. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Effective July first, two thousand twenty-four, Iowa code was amended to allow cities to suspend certain portions of the civil service requirements. The purpose of this is to assist cities in addressing staffing issues related to the civil service positions by removing the requirement that individuals be hired off of a civil service commission certified eligibility list. This provides flexibility in the hiring process that will be beneficial to the city as well as applicants from a time and scheduling standpoint. All state mandated requirements still must be met by the applicants prior to offer, to an offer of employment. The resolution is for the police department solely and will not be, have any bearing on the civil service positions in the city. There is no budget consideration for this charge. Any more discussion?
Chief Baum, is this something that you're okay with? I mean, does this uh impede the integrity of the civil service test in any way?
No, it doesn't impede the integrity of it. Um I already proctor the exams, uh civil services there. When I proctor the exams, uh what this does is it provides flexibility for us and the applicants, and it uh condenses the front portion of the hiring process and could possibly uh lead to somebody being hired approximately two months earlier, which could lead to them starting to receive training earlier and be on the streets earlier.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number twelve, council liaison reports. Item number thirteen, staff reports.
I have one quick one. So tonight Pam uh did the, the plat for up the Elcom site. So we had another meeting today, uh regional planning. So you know, we have two grants out there uh for phase one and phase two. Regional planning is asking uh to submit a phase three. Uh so we're going to be coming back, asking the council for approval for that one also. And they have a little more work to do. I think Pam, that map that you and I found, they discussed today that they might go a little further over to the left as you're looking at that, and maybe a little further to the right, but they're not sure yet. So they'll get back to us on it. That's all I have.
So I guess asking that, which I can ask you tomorrow, but so we're going to have to go through the plating process two or three more times. So is that okay with the council if we just do that in one swoop? Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? Any more staff reports? Item number fourteen, new business. Item number fifteen, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Um we'll take five minutes and we'll come back to the workshop.
Why didn't you announce that? What did you say? Guess why?
Well, it's been done.
Just a second.
I hope that's all finished and done. Now if we could get the-
Yeah, so, yep, certainly. So that's my next step. So now I got a, that lady finally answered. Work off the original budget. Act like we're, we've been granted approval for the amended budget. So she makes it sound, I haven't been in there yet. But she makes, yeah, she makes it sound like we got approval to-
And then you, then you-
To have the amended budget, which is great.
And then, then you think you're arguing like, uh-uh.
Or somebody else will go, ah, she told you wrong. Yeah, right now it looks pretty positive. Uh this next thing shouldn't take very long. I just kind of want to give everybody a heads up on a bad situation over there that we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place on. Let them know that we're going to still be working on it. Maybe five minutes, depending on how many questions they have for Michael and Brian. Thanks.
Okay, I gotta send this to, uh, what's his name? Uh, Pat? I have to send him that report.
I need a call to order the council workshop, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Item one, sanitary sewer service relocation at fourteen, at four seventeen South Eighteenth Street as a result of the sewer separation for the Eighteenth Street construction project.
So I just wanted to bring this to the council's attention early on. Uh this, there's a lot of technical stuff in here that you might have to ask Michael or Brian questions about, but I will give you the uh explanation that I can understand. And on South Eighteenth Street, when the plans were drawn up for the sewer separation over there, uh there was one residence at four seventeen South Eighteenth Street that um a direct feed from uh that house fed in vertically to the top of one of the sewer lines that the plans called for basically closing down or vacating. Uh and this was discovered during the construction of the project. Uh so the resident of the house obviously has been put in a bad situation because this is going to take some modification to go along with the plans. Uh it, it's, it would cost the city extra money to leave that sewer open because that's not the way the plans were designed up. Uh so we had uh Kilkot contractors, who is a sub over there, kind of give us an estimate of what they thought it would cost to uh run this one service into the newer lines that are being run over there. Uh and we thought the estimate was a little bit high, of course. Uh so we are meeting tomorrow, again, on our construction meetings that are every two weeks, uh to see if we can come up with uh may, maybe a reduced cost um or better solution. But right now, it's, it's not a great situation, but I want the council to be aware of it. Uh you can see the original estimate here is twenty-two thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. Uh and if anybody has any technical questions, you'll have to ask Michael or Brian, but I want everybody to be aware of it. We're going to continue to work on it and see if there's uh any, any way to resolve this in a better manner. But this is what we're looking at right now.
When does work like this, uh when is it a homeowner's responsibility versus a city's responsibility pertaining to sewer lines, water lines? Um I believe my understanding of water lines, there's a junction box somewhere and, you know, home side of that box falls on the homeowner to do any repairs. Uh is there any similar rule for sewer lines? Just, just a general rule of purpose?
That's, the homeowner would own their lateral from their house to the main. It would be their responsibility. In a normal circumstance, say if something happened to, to the resident's lateral, they would be responsible. But this situation, this, the sewer line that this line drops into runs underneath her house, and it runs diagonally across, basically underneath that, that whole block. So we're abandoning that for obvious reasons. Uh if something were ever to happen to that line and it, it did break, you know, obviously the sinkhole would be under a residence or in somebody's backyard. Um so we did have that separated per the plans on Eighteenth Street. We didn't know that her line went ba- basically through her basement floor and drops right to the top of the, that's, that's not normal. Normal laterals come into the side of the sewer pipes and they're easy to see when you camera them. Uh running our camera through that, you don't really think to really look vertical except for maybe some, for cracking purposes, but we didn't know that that lateral dropped in the way it did.
So essentially what we're doing then is we're relocating where that main is and reestablishing that point of connection.
So we're relocating the main out into the street to get it up from running um underneath the house. And then we'll have to relocate her lateral to the main that's in the alley. And it's basically the contractor's going to have to go into her basement, hand jackhammer out about a three foot wide, twenty foot long trench in her basement um to get underneath her floor to run the sewer line out the back of her house into the, into the alley. And it's all handwork, which is why the price is the way it is. Like Dave said, we have a construction meeting tomorrow. Um we're still going to talk about this. Right now, the, this won't have, this, this part of the project won't have to be completed for probably uh a good month or two before they get that line actually separated and the storm off of it. So we got a little bit of time to maybe get some more options from our engineers or from the contractor.
So this is sewer separation? This is not South Eighteenth Street being redone? These are two separate things?
It's going on at the same time. It's all the- Definitely different.
But it's not happening because of the street. It's happening because of sewer separation.
And that's the, you're talking about the sewer dropping directly into the main sewer, and that's the only, you're going to abandon that sewer and that's the only house on it?
Correct.
So you're just talking one house?
Yep. That's the only half, that house that's left on it. They've separated the ones out in the, that run would be your normal drop. It comes, that sewer line runs down the alley and then bends and it turns and goes underneath the house and then diagonally across that block.
And everybody else has been put on Eighteenth Street all-
Yep, yep. And this is the only one, and it's obviously a little more complicated than your, than just switching them over. So uh if this is our best and final option, we'll be coming back to council and then asking for a contract for this, um if we don't come up with something different. We just want you to be aware of it ahead of time.
Got one more question. You said you, you said they had to take the sewer out and go twenty foot in the concrete, jackhammer in the basement floor up. Why can't they go out the side of the building and go down alongside of it and not go the twenty foot in the basement?
Say, say that again, I'm sorry, Steve.
Not, they're talking about jackhammering twenty foot of the basement up, is what you said.
Uh huh.
Why can't you go out the side of the house and go around the house outside and not jackhammer the floor up?
Uh, it's something, it's-
Plumbing with, with her basement, she has four or eight in her basement. So if we were to go out the wall, just four or eight-
I didn't say the wall, I said the floor. Go, go in and find her drain that goes down to the main sewer, tie on to it and take it out of the building and alongside the building, not in the concrete floor. Is what I'm saying. As a plumbing contractor for forty years, that's what I would have tried doing.
That's essentially what we're doing.
Oh, you're not. You're going twenty foot. He said you're going to cut twenty foot of concrete.
We would have, we've got a, wherever, I mean, we can find where it drops down into the sewer. I mean, we maybe save ourselves by ten foot maybe?
Which would be five or ten thousand dollars, the way it sounds. I'm just asking, I don't know. Okay, I'm just-
Still a work in progress, but I want everybody to be aware of it.
Okay, any more discussion? Then um the workshop is adjourned. We're, guys, uh council, you all realize we're going to close session here then, don't you? Okay. Okay, are we ready then?
Are you ready?
I'll make myself a note on that. We'll ask them tomorrow. Yeah. Hey, every, everything helps.
I was just gonna lock one. I'm gonna lock it all. Okay, here we go, guys. I'd like to call to order the special council meeting, Thursday, September 19th, 2024. Kilkuck City Council, Chambers 501 Main Street, Kilkuck, Iowa. I need a roll call. Crunchaw?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Garcia? Chackley? Dade? Andrews?
Here.
Tillman?
Here.
Bryant?
Here.
Greenwald?
Here.
I need a motion to go into, enter into closed session to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge are being considered with the necess, with the necessary to prevent needless and irreparable, irreparable injury to the individual's reputation, and the individual requests a closed session.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I have a roll call? Crunchaw? Walker?
Aye.
Chackley? Dade? Andrews?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Greenwald?
Aye.
Okay, guys, head upstairs. I'll lock the door. You gonna lock the door?
I can do that. Like the interior? Will do.